All right, the meeting of the City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Whole will come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons, Mr. Brown, Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Madigan, Ms. Marlin, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Smythe, Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the ayes have it. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public input. I have three cards, and the public is encouraged to fill out public input cards at the back of the room if you wish to address the council. Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood wish to not address the committee, but ask that their position be entered into the record, that they are continually concerned with the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. I have two additional public input cards. Both are for addressing the members before the agenda item is presented, and the first is Daryl Cruz.
Good evening. I think it's on. Yeah, okay, thank you. I have no idea really tonight what the mayor, or the police chief, or the human relations director might present with regards to the traffic stop recommendations and actions that they might encourage you to take tonight. But I would like to make a few comments regarding traffic stop data collection, just in reference to a couple of things before you begin that discussion, and I'd like to make five points. First, there's no reason or need to link the recommendation to hire a full-time, or part-time, or a contracted statistician with asking the Urbana Police Department to collect local data. The new data outlined in recommendation, Task Force Recommendation 2.4, is not overly extensive and can be collected by the UPD without the assistance of a statistician. There's no reason to delay collecting this data just because the issue of the statistician has not been resolved, or might not be resolved, tonight. Number two, the committee does not need the UPD or the statistician to prepare a detailed comprehensive complex annual statistical analysis of 70 pages, like was done by Paul Testa and the Traffic Stop Task Force, and I hope that's not what you're envisioning this person to do every year. I think that is totally not necessary. Rather, the annual data to be collected and reviewed should be specific, limited, and relevant to answering at least two questions. One, did traffic stop racial disparities decline significantly from the previous year? And did traffic stops that involved an investigatory component actually reduce crime in a manner and to the degree that is fair, equitable, and acceptable to the entire community? Point three, I believe in February 2015, the Urbana Police Department voluntarily started classifying local traffic stops as safety patrol and community caretaking. I'm not sure if the UPD has taken additional steps, or the next step, to begin collecting data recommended in 2.4 regarding arrests made during traffic stops and classifying any arrests as traffic crime, warrant arrests, drug-related crime, property crimes, or violent weapons crimes. If not, the city council should immediately direct the UPD to start collecting this information on each traffic stop. This information is critical to understanding the efficacy of investigatory traffic stops by critiquing its impact on reducing crime while potentially having a negative racial impact in police-community relations and trust. Fourth point, one other piece of valuable data that you might want to consider collecting that was not recommended by the task force or included in the statistical analysis, but it's rather simple to collect and report, is the number and race of drivers who experience multiple traffic stops during the year. And if you read some of the DOG reports in Baltimore, Cleveland, and other cities around the state, you're finding that multiple stops by race sometimes reveals a practice that's important to understand what's taking place. I would suggest this would include the aggregate number of citations, written warnings, and oral warnings any one driver might have received during the year. This information would be extremely helpful in analyzing and understanding any racial disparities involving drivers who experienced multiple stops.
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
A void in the current data. I encourage you to direct the UPD to collect this data and report it. And number five, at a minimum, the local data to be reviewed biannually or annually should include the following data already being collected: the IDOT traffic report, three types of local traffic stops, hit rates, searches for contraband, both probable cause and consent searches. All of this information was in a traffic stop report or is currently being collected. New data added should include, one, the arrest data and the reasons for the arrests made during any of the three types of stops, and, two, a breakout of drivers by racial group who have experienced multiple stops within the year. Collecting and reporting this limited new traffic stop information is neither costly nor excessively time-consuming. It just takes your commitment to do so. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Daryl. Let me be acknowledged by the chair.
Alderman Ammons.
Don't seem so happy there, Mike.
Very happy.
I can tell, I can tell. You're gonna get happier, too. So, point number four that you were raising, I wanted to make sure I had the right, just make sure I understood. You said, "number and race." Could you just repeat that, please?
It should be the number and race of drivers who experience multiple traffic stops during the year, whether it's in a form of a citation, a written, or a verbal warning that are collectively reported.
To your knowledge, is that being collected now?
I don't think it was in the data analysis of the task force report. I look, I would, happy to be stand corrected on that, but it's very simple information just to find out if there were multiple stops of certain individuals by race during the year. And the reason I suggest that is, like, there's been a lot of reporting of that by the Department of Justice in their recent studies in various cities, and they found that to be an important issue to add to local data, so I think that would be relevant to a biannual or annual report to see.
And you highlighted two things that you thought were important in any analysis that would be done by the statistician. Did the disparities reduce for the year, and did the investigatory stops reduce something? I didn't get all of it.
Yeah, well, the second one is basically what the task force has asked you to do by collecting the data in Recommendation 2.4, and that is to determine whether investigatory stops are effective in reducing crime or not. You basically need to determine if arrests are made during traffic stops, the three types of traffic stops, and to categorize those into the five categories that they've identified in the recommendation. And by looking at the total number of stops, then looking at the three types of traffic stops, and whether an investigatory stop occurred and arrests made, might be able to determine whether the investigatory stop is working the way we intended, and it should continue, or whether it may be problematic in terms of its equitability, fairness, and whether it's actually creating unintended consequences over time that reduce the effectiveness of police to fight crime and harm community relations.
So, are you suggesting that, because the council agreed that the statistician, and I think even the report, said that there was a need for a statistician or somebody to crunch these numbers and to analyze them on a regular basis, are you saying that you don't think that we need a statistician? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm saying the statistician doesn't collect this data. The UPD collects the data. If you don't direct the UPD to collect the data, you feel you need to answer these questions, you have nothing for the statistician to analyze and report back to you. The statistician doesn't collect it, okay? It's collected on traffic stop tickets, and you just need to direct, or some other form. The police department probably can answer that better than I can, how that might be done, but it can be done, it's been done in other parts of the city. So that's the first step. It should have been done 15 months ago, in my opinion.
Okay, and so according to what you shared, you felt like that the, whether it was a citation, a warning, or a ticket, these are things that were in 2.4, race, various different components that should be collected by the police at the, during the stop.
Yes.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Daryl, would you mind, for the benefit of the council, to provide your testimony via email to everyone?
I'd be happy to.
That'd be great.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a public input card from Esther Pat, who wishes to address the members before the agenda item.
Actually, this is about Esther Pat, 706 South Coler. This is actually about something that was on last week's agenda. I just wanted to give you a little feedback with regard to historic preservation. First, in the whole discussion about development on Lincoln and Nevada, I and many of my neighbors said that we weren't opposed to an apartment building on Lincoln, Nevada. We just didn't want a five-story building that was twice the size of what's allowed by Wright. And I hope that the absence of all those people who were protesting from last week's meeting evidenced the sincerity that, yeah, we're not looking for funny ways to try to stop a building from being built, and that's why so few people, I think, turned out to speak in favor of historic designation of 804 South Lincoln, because they did not see this part of the same thing. And in fact, I didn't even know during all that discussion about the development that anyone had submitted a petition for the designation. Second, there were, I didn't watch your meeting, but I read in the News Gazette that there was some discussion about how, the challenge, and how unworkable it is, and frustration with the historic preservation ordinance, and I would just like to give you my perspective from the outside, that the only time the city council has those kind of discussions is when you deny the designation. So, the system's working. The whole basis of the setup for being able to designate a property historic despite the owner's objection, I mean, it's a process where the historic preservation looks at, does it meet the criteria for historic designation, and if so, they say yes, and they recommend it, which I think is their job. I don't think they did anything wrong, but then you all, the council, decide, particularly when there's a proposal to designate something as a landmark, and the owner doesn't want it designated, you decide whether the properties, you decide how the way that the property owner's interested in doing whatever they want with their property with the city's interest in preserving something that's really of historic value. And everyone here might not agree with every decision that has been made about those, but if you look over time, there are some that passed despite owner objection, and some that did not pass, and I think the difference was the strength of the petition. I hope you will not even consider going to the point of eliminating the ability to designate something historic despite the owner's objection, because sometimes there are some really strong petitions. One of them was the, it ended up being the Royer district, but Joseph Royer's home that he designed and lived in, and what they call the mother-in-law cottage next door, the owner of the mother-in-law cottage did nominate it, so that was actually an owner nomination, but the owner of 801 West Oregon, the actual Royer home, opposed it, and the council decided to designate it because it was of such significant historic value. Most of you were not on the council, I don't know, maybe, or some of you weren't eight or nine years ago when 502 and 504 West Elm were proposed. That was, there was a demolition permit filed, that is why someone filed the petition to designate, and on 504, the vote was unanimous, seven to zero, despite the owner's objection. Even one council member who, on the previous case, said that she was philosophically opposed to the whole idea of designating something historic over the owner's objection, found the petition for 504 West Elm so compelling that she voted yes, too. And last thing I just want to say, and I'm not, I didn't come here to suggest you put this on your next agenda, but in terms of what the real problem is, and why you get these petitions when they're not from the owner, often when they're triggered by someone filing a request for demolition, it's because there is no entity designated to, or, yeah, there is no entity to make these petitions, and anyone can do it because there's no one who's supposed to do it. I was on the city council committee that wrote the ordinance 18 years ago, and I and a couple of the people from Preservation and Conservation Association suggested that the city create a body, like the Historic Preservation Commission, to be the one to look at the city and to identify which properties, based on their actual historic value, should be nominated. But then, it was, the Historic Preservation Commission's supposed to be a hearing body, and the city attorney said they can't do both. I thought there should be yet another body, oh, we have too many bodies, the city, you know, is limited in how many staff, so it just ends up with, there's no one to do it, and that's why it happens this way. So, like I said, I'm asking you to put this on the top of your agenda, but if you are so frustrated with it that you want to do something, what we need is something, whether it's a citizen committee that is established by the city, that can get some kind of staff support to do it, or something else. But right now, if there's nobody at the city who's responsible for looking at how do we preserve our historic treasures, the city council will continue to get petitions that are made just by whenever somebody thinks they should make them, and though, even if that continues, still, the power lies with all of you, and I think you discharge your duty very responsibly in deciding when you think they should be designated, when they shouldn't. But that really is the problem, is there's no one to do the work. It's a lot of trouble to write one of those petitions, and unless there's someone who's responsible for doing that, you're just gonna get them willy-nilly when somebody gets it in their head and has the time to do it. So, I hope you'll just think on that. But I know that's not on the agenda tonight, I just wanted to bring this up before it was too far in the past, and I thank you for your service and for your time tonight. Thanks.
All right, I have an input card from Eldris Melinda Carr, stressing continued concerns regarding Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues and historic impact. So those are all the public input cards I have, so we'll move along to presentations. Do we have any presentations? Staff reports? Libby?
Some events upcoming. There's a business and development lunch tomorrow that the council's been invited to. Will be a special lunch. It's being sponsored by First Federal, and it will be at the Urbana Country Club, so I hope that we can see some council members there. Also upcoming is the Sweet Corn Festival this weekend, Friday night, and continuing all day Saturday and Saturday night, and I know that the UBA has put out a call for volunteers, and I know, I believe we'll also be having a city booth this year. So, a couple different options for volunteering, and Alex, who's here tonight as well, has been working to staff the city booth. Let's see, what else? Okay, I've been happy to receive help of the council members in spreading the word on the Regional Neighborhood Network Conference coming up, the end of September, September 29th, October 1st, and at the Hilton Garden Inn. It's being sponsored by the City of Urbana and the City of Champaign. It's a regional, super-regional conference, and we're accepting and encouraging attendance by neighborhood representatives, boards and commissions, and we so far have registered commissioners and neighborhood leaders from southeast and east Urbana, so we'll continue to spread the word there. Also, I wanted to just bring to council's attention, and we'll be spreading the word here as well, that we are looking for people to apply for some vacancies on some of our boards and commissions, wonderful opportunities to get involved in community development. I know in particular, we're looking for Community Development Commission members. We're also looking for Plane Commission and Design Review Board for East Urbana, among other vacancies. So we'll be spreading the word on that as well, and all those applications go through the mayor's office. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Any other staff reports? All right, so discussion item on the agenda tonight is curbanas.
Hi, Bill.
Hi. I guess I'll start things off, but we received a email from Matt Cho to, for the city to consider a signage on a curbana, the structure itself, advertising potentially the business in a, like the Sweet Corn Festival, or use those opportunities to bring the business into those restaurants, what have you. The right-of-way ordinance, curbanas are built within public right-of-way. The technically signage, private property type signage is not permitted within public right-of-ways, and that includes, like, real estate signs and things of that sort, and are not permitted within public right-of-ways, except for in certain business districts. We do allow the sandwich board signs to be installed, and this is something that city council approved several years ago, to allow for those modest-sized signs that typically reside over a sidewalk that advertise a business, they're open, they've got a special, what have you. So, if city council would like to see the expansion of private business signage, particularly or specifically for affixed to a curbana, that would be council action that would be needed. Just the mechanics of it are such that presumably it would be 100% expensive, you know, the curbana sponsor, which we only have two, so the two on Main Street and Public Works would want to be involved with how the sign would be affixed, and of course, what the content would be on it and that sort of thing, but have not done anything more with the discussion, other than it's not currently permitted by ordinance.
Matt, would you like to come up?
So I have a public input card from Matt Cho in support of the issue.
Matt?
Hi. I wish I had provided some of the pictures that I provided both Bill and Libby, but I believe, I guess, the interpretation of the ordinance that Bill is mentioning that prevents any kind of signage is, not necessarily signage, but a canvas privacy screen that you see typically in other, I guess, urban areas that have these sidewalk corrals for seating. Occasionally, they do have the brand or the name of the establishment that that seating is designated for, but in terms of the sandwich board, I guess, equivalent of that, that's something that I'm definitely not interested in. I'm not looking to put daily specials or brand names of beer on there, but just to clearly identify that this is the curbana for zip yard seating, as well as we share that with Pizza M. and Flying Machine. So that was simply the request, and I believe, I don't fault Bill for the interpretation of it, but I think it's pretty clear that any kind of signage or advertisement is prohibited, but I was wondering if this is something that might not fall under the, I guess, the sandwich board criteria, and might be something different. So I appreciate the opportunity to discuss and...
I'll add that, you know, we haven't, staff doesn't spend any time on this matter, so, I mean, if you want us to explore this, we'll do the due diligence and come back with a report, but right now, the request was made, we denied it, and here we are. So...
Diane?
Well, I think Charlie and I were copied on the, or eventually contacted regarding this issue, and I certainly am in favor of looking into this, especially if it's a canvas privacy screen, which you see on these things all over the country, well, all over the world, when you have, when you have these outdoor eating areas. And as I think I indicated, I frankly would welcome some sort of screening on the curbana. It kind of, it's a visual barrier between the people sitting at the tables and the traffic, and since our curbanas are actually in the street, I think it's important, but I don't see any problem with doing it, especially, Matt shared a couple examples of what he was thinking, and they look perfectly fine, and actually better than the sandwich boards on the sidewalk would look.
Charlie?
Yeah, in the same vein, I look at them as a chance to even, Urbana, you know, we can, we can do a little Urbana branding there as well in setting these up. So I would encourage staff to look at those examples, work with our city attorney, and bring us something, because I really see no objection to something that encourages privacy, encourages the use and visiting of downtown.
Dennis?
Yeah, I haven't seen the examples that, Matt, you're mentioning, so are the privacy screens to the height of the top of the railing, or do these extend above the railing to add further privacy besides having the railing on the, I don't know how these are, like, set up, so I'd like to see this.
Yeah, I did the measurement of our curbana, and basically, it's offset in between the top rail and maybe a foot above kind of the bottom floor of the curbana, and so there is some space in between, but it's enough coverage to provide for that privacy and that screening away from the street.
And then, Bill, can you kind of remind us about, the curbanas are in the public right-of-way, they're being sponsored by individual businesses, and we have had questions about whether people who are at neighboring establishments can sit at the tables that are occupied in the curbana area. So are these basically private spaces? These are not apparently public spaces because people have been asked to leave if they're eating food from a different establishment?
No, I need to check on that, to be sure. I mean, for Crane Alley and for Matt's business, they're generally for those businesses, not necessarily for other businesses.
So, so they're being...
That's my understanding.
The cities establishing them are allowing these to be erected, and it's basically an extension of the business into the public right-of-way?
Of that adjacent business, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
Okay, I want to make sure I understand the points that were being made. I think what I thought I heard you say, Dennis, was that the curbana is an extension of the public right-of-way.
Into the public.
Into the public right-of-way, and there's parking being taken up and things like that, but yet the space is being used for, it's a private space.
I need to check on that. I'm sorry, I don't have that answered directly. I believe it's for their exclusive use, but don't quote me on that, so...
Was that the, I mean, I wasn't here when the curbanas were brought out, I don't think. Was that the intent, that it would just be for particular businesses?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the original intent was that they pay a permit fee, and it was to be constructed in front of their business and to be used by their business or others who shared in the permit.
And the permit cost was, I'm sure it took into consideration the, was it two parking, two or three parking spaces that it takes up?
Two spaces.
Two spaces? Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, I'd want, I'd appreciate clarification on that, because I seem to remember a discussion on that, and it, I thought that we were under, I was under the impression that you couldn't ask someone to leave if they were sitting in the public right-of-way, but maybe I got that wrong. So, yeah, I appreciate some research on that, and as far as the privacy screen goes, I think it would be, it could be attractive, and if it was done right and everything, I don't know how legally we can control the message, so there might be a problem there with, you know, as long as it's the name of the business or a sign or something, but if it's a, you know, a beer sign or something like that, it's, can we control that? Is that legal?
Recent US Supreme Court decisions, I believe it's Reed versus City of Gilbert, has placed very strong limitations on local governments' efforts to regulate content. So it's, and the contours of this Supreme Court decision are still yet to be fully resolved. There are a number of cases... But essentially, a lot of commentators have indicated that it is very difficult to regulate the content. And if you don't like the content on the sign, that's a problem.
Mayor?
If it's in the public right-of-way, isn't there the ability to limit the number of signs? Because you wouldn't want to have advertisements hanging from street signals, traffic signals?
By limiting number of signs, unless you do it based on content, I think a municipality can limit the number of signs.
Well, can't you just prohibit signs from being on traffic signals, for example?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's not the number, it's just that you can't do it?
You can't say certain types of signs will be limited and not other. You know, content of the sign is what's problematic, not the fact that there is or is not a sign.
Okay.
Charlie?
Even though it's city property that the sign's being hung on?
It's even more of a problem, because it's city property, because government control of speech.
Okay.
Well, but the reality is that if local businesses who have no interest, at least in this situation, have no interest in putting any kind of obnoxious or obscene or otherwise inappropriate language on these, if a future business did, a city council would have the right to repeal the ordinance and, and terminate the, the ability to put a sign up, correct?
As long as it's not, your decision is not motivated or based on content. Obviously, obscene, obscene, obscene language on a sign is...
We don't want people rubbernecking and reading these signs, that's a public safety issue.
I agree. But deal with the Supreme Court decision, that's, that's the problem.
Just to be clear, the context of this research and review is for two locations only. So we're not talking about signs anywhere else, but on one curbana or the other curbana or both curbanas. That's all we're looking at. Just to be clear. Now, if you want to expand that, I need in that direction.
Diane?
So do we need a motion to direct staff? I move to direct staff to explore the feasibility of canvas privacy screen slash signage on our curbanas.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and I assume it wouldn't be limited to canvas, it could be some other kind of appropriate material, right?
Or vinyl.
Right. It's been moved and seconded, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I dot traffic.
I dot traffic task force update. Mayor?
I'm just going to give a, a brief overview. It seems that the number one issue that we're talking about in this country right now is police community relations and the issues of fairness and justice. And this has been brought about by events in many cities, Ferguson, Baltimore, Chicago. It gives some people the impression that police departments aren't living up to the basic standards of justice. And I went to the SUNA meeting in May, that's Southeast Urbana Neighborhood Association, and one resident asked if Urbana was going to call for an investigation by the US Department of Justice. So I think people are under the impression that everybody's kind of misbehaving here. The truth is that there's a broad spectrum of police departments, and I say that what was going on in Ferguson and their cleaning up their act, was at one end of the spectrum, and Urbana is at the other end. When I initiated the effort to create a civilian review board in 2005 for the Urbana Police, it was not because I thought we had a bad police department, it was because I was committed to transparency and accountability, and I viewed it like the good housekeeping seal of approval. We think we offer a very good service, but if anybody is dissatisfied, we'd like to hear about it, and we'll try to, to fix the problem. So we created the civilian review board. So if someone wants to complain to the police chief, if he can't resolve it and they're still dissatisfied, they can come to the civilian review board, and, which will listen to all sides. And now, the US Department of Justice, when there's a problem like what occurred in Ferguson, typically will recommend a civilian review board be established. And our neighbor, Champaign, is actually studying this now. So the question is, how do you measure fairness and justice? The original I dot ratio we received gave Urbana a higher disparity than Champaign. And one citizen came to this council and said that that showed that Urbana had the worst police department in the county. I thought that was kind of out of sync with everything else that we know about the Urbana Police Department, so I looked into how is this number actually calculated? And it's done by taking the number of African-American drivers stopped by police, divided by the estimated number of African-American drivers in Urbana. And that's based on the census population of people age 15 and over. There are two problems with this ratio. It's, it's the number of stops divided by the population of, of a racial group. So when you look at the numerator of the ratio, the number of stops, the problem with that is that half the people driving on the streets of Urbana who get stopped do not live in Urbana, so it's kind of awkward to compare it with our population in the census. And when you look at the denominator of that ratio, half of the population of Urbana is University of Illinois students. And at the time that that first ratio came out, they had about 5% African-Americans. And that group of people, the half of the people that are U of I students, tend to drive less than the rest of the population. So that distorts that ratio. And we had been cautioned earlier by a statistician from Northwestern University that it was really misleading to take a city this size and use that type of a ratio. And that's why it's misleading. Now, according to the United States Department of Justice, social scientists agree that comparing traffic stops by race with census population by race can be highly inaccurate. And that's in a report from the Department of Justice. So we need a more accurate measure, and that's why we are recommending, we're following the recommendation from the I dot task force to hire a statistician. And we found an excellent person. Melissa Haynes is highly qualified, and we'll have her resume. Alex Batista's going to give, hand out her resume. So now we're in a position to better research questions from the council and the public. And in addition to having a measure, there's also the issue of public perception. It's a critical factor that goes way beyond measurement issues, it's how do people feel about how they're being treated? And when we had the I dot task force meeting at the Urbana City Center, Civic Center, we invited people to come and talk about their experiences with the police department, and we had more city council members and task force members there than people that wanted to testify. But I remember of three people that testified. One of them talked about an issue, and I went up to her afterwards and said, "Did you file a complaint with the Urbana Police?" And she told me it happened in Farmer City. Another lady was talking about what happened in Rantoul. And a third person that I asked about it, she was convinced it happened in Urbana, and the police department records, they have interdepartmental records, said that it happened in Champaign. So I don't know if any of the people were actually talking about what happened to them in Urbana. But still, it is an issue of how people feel about how they've been treated and what the public perception is. And I think we, talking about, where do we go from here? The I dot study was a first step. And in order to expand public discussion, I'm doing a listening tour to hear how people feel about traffic stops, what their personal experience is, and what they would recommend for us to improve interactions with those who are stopped for minor infractions. We've already dealt with the issue of people with limited means paying fines. We've extended the amount of time that people can pay a fine, and we, and we have payment plans, and that's what our city attorney's office works with. And we're now exploring ways for people to do public service instead of paying a fine. And so next, Mike Munson and Alex Batista will give you reports to encourage your thoughts, questions, and recommendations as we move this discussion forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has for me before Mike starts. You have a question?
Is that something for all of us to have?
Yes.
I can have a copy of this.
I do have a question for you, Mayor.
Aaron?
Yes.
So, this issue has been an, an issue that's brewing all over the country, and I just kind of want to know, do, do you believe that there's a disparity for African-American drivers in Urbana? That they are being stopped at a higher rate than any other ethnicity or ethnic group?
I think that we have to look at the I dot numbers very carefully. As I said, it's, you're dividing a number which shows that half of the people that are stopped aren't even living in Urbana, and you're comparing it with the census numbers, and there's problems with the census numbers. So I think there is a disparity, but I think it's been really exaggerated by that particular measurement, and we need to get a better measurement. And I think the best measurement would be actual drivers in Urbana. And so I think we, we need to work with the state of Illinois to make that license information available, so we can get a good measure, so we know what we're working with.
So the answer to the question is yes, you do believe that there's a disparity?
I think there is a disparity, but I don't think it's what has been reported. And I think it can be related to calls for service. So that's the kind of stuff that we, we need the statistician to investigate.
So what, and, so you're saying that the testimonies of the African-American community and the, not just the Civic Center example that you give, but when this chamber was filled, at least a couple of times, with people coming from the NAACP and various other different organizations, the Ministry Alliance, reporting to this body about the disparate impact, the mistreatment, the disparity that they felt, and feeling targeted as drivers, are you saying that those are not valid concerns or valid stories?
I'm saying that people have concerns, and we need to deal with the concerns, but we also need to have some accurate measurements. And I think that the I dot statistic is not valid for Urbana because of the items that I listed. Who's driving on our streets, we're a very small city, and the composition of the census that we have, two groups of people, one drives much more than the other, so I think that the percentage of African-American drivers was understated in that study. And so we're going to do better statistics. But we also have to talk to people about how they feel and what their actual experiences are. And that's why I pushed to get a civilian review board set up. But we don't get a lot of complaints, and I think it's a real mistake for people to think that we've got the same kind of problems that were happening in Ferguson. I've read the report on Ferguson, and they were doing things very differently than what Urbana does, and they are, you know, getting shaped up and, and starting to do things better. But we don't have that same type of problem, and I think it's a mistake to lump all cities together and say we're identical. I'm not saying we don't have any problems, I didn't say that. I said it's a mistake to say that we need to be investigated by the Illinois, by the US Department of Justice, because it's just disproportionate to what the issue is. But we do need to talk to people. And a lot of people did not come forward to talk about it, so that's why I'm going to go out and talk to people in meetings, a series of meetings, and just listen to what people have to say. Because I think that's a very important input into this, rather than just the I dot statistics.
So I'm not going to try to argue different things about statisticians and all that kind of stuff. That's not my forte, that's not my area of expertise, but I've lived in Champaign-Urbana for over 30 some odd years, and I know the black community well. And so we collectively feel as if our stories are dismissed, and even when you have data, the stories still seem to be dismissed, in some very calculated or politically correct way. But the reality is, even if the 5% of students that you described were drivers at the University of Illinois, and the other 45 or 50% of the drivers who were stopped in Urbana were from someplace else, the common denominator is that they were all black. And they were stopped in the city limits of Urbana. So our police department, whether these individuals were from Timbuktu, Zimbabwe, or Rantoul, they were black, and they were stopped in Urbana by our police department. That in and of itself speaks to a racial disparity that needs to be addressed. And so if the disparity isn't as high, once you look at the drivers in Urbana, you're still going to have a disparity, because other black folks are going to drive through Urbana, and they're going to get stopped. So you still have the same issue. And so I just wanted to say, I won't belabor the point, that again, this feels as though we're going to find a way to explain away what we feel.
That's not what I said, Erin. I said, "I want to listen to what people's actual experiences are and ask them how they would recommend that we improve things." That's what I'm doing. And that includes you.
Charlie?
I just wanted to respond really quickly. Well, I was until perception, you see? Because you may say one thing and I may hear something else. Now, I don't necessarily believe that our officers come to work and say, "Hey, let me go find a bunch of black people to stop." I'm not saying that. I'm saying the results are the same, though. And so the way we feel, or what, how I perceive what you just said, was that only a handful of people showed up to address it. Nobody ever comes to the CPRB. Well, the experience at the CPRB may be one of the reasons why they don't come, and I won't bore everybody with how I was treated when I went through the CPRB, when guns were pulled on my nieces in the front of the house where they live, because they were quote-unquote "in the wrong place at the wrong time." And how I was treated, and they were treated, through this process of the CPRB that has no subpoena power. People are going to show up and tell you their stories, the people who are on the streets being stopped for taillights being out, or license plates being out, or music being too loud, are not going to show up at the Urbana Civic Center to tell you their problems. They have no faith in the police department, so they're not going to show up to tell you the problems with the police department. I am here to tell you that. And I don't feel like that's being received very well. And I'll stop for a minute.
Charlie?
I think to, to get us going, I've passed out some ideas here that Erin and I discussed earlier with Alex. And the third item actually addresses some of the issues raised earlier by Dural, and directly respond to, to, to what I think shows up in the data. Moving violations tend to be okay, using the census data that we've been given. It's the other stuff that's out of whack, and that's what we need to be probably focusing on going forward. And it's those sorts of things, the stops for the taillights and so on, that we need to understand why those are different, because they are generating inanimosity that we just don't need in this community. So I think it's probably important to listen to Mike and Alex and figure out where we go in a positive direction to get, to make this a better community.
Okay, Mike Munson?
Okay. I'd like to preface this by saying I'm not a statistician, I'm not the expert on this issue like Alex is, but I've been reading about it quite a bit, been talking to council members and mayor, and I want to see the city move forward. Mayor Pressing requested I report to you some of what I found, so here it goes. So title of this is Benchmarks for Comparing Police Stop Data in Search of the Ideal Benchmark. Not sure there is one, but we're in search of it. So we're getting a new police statistician, Melissa Haynes. She starts August 25th, and she should help greatly in gathering, assessing data, and pointing us in the right direction. I've been looking at the new 2015 I dot traffic stop data, and some other reports and studies, including our own excellent task force report. Couple sort of conclusions, I think it's made me realize that finding appropriate benchmarks, and plural benchmarks, more than one, to compare with our traffic, traffic stop data, I think will be important as we move forward. will be important as we move forward, so. This is from the 2015 data, I looked at some of our surrounding neighbors, what the disparity ratio is for African-American drivers stopped. So Urbana was actually the second lowest. Unfortunately, all these ratios are fairly high, so. Digression, this is not pertaining to benchmarking so much, but looking at the reports, I really thought it was worth noting that Urbana requested far fewer consent searches of vehicles than our neighboring cities, a lot fewer. And so, there's the numbers. So what is benchmarking? Benchmarking is the process of developing a demographic profile of drivers at risk of being stopped by police, assuming no bias. Benchmarks provide a baseline number against which to compare to accumulated data. This is from the first Illinois Traffic Stop Report in 2004. So here are some of the benchmarking methods, there's quite a few of them. Census population estimates, probably the most common. Adjusted census, this is what Illinois-Missouri use, you take out from the census numbers underage, you know, 15 and under, so you're just looking at the driving age population. Missouri provides a lot of data about the driving age population. Illinois does not provide very much, and really, the data sheets in Illinois need vast improvement. We can talk about that at some other time. Here's something I think would be great to look at, licensed drivers in Urbana, I don't think it would be that hard to get, you know, Secretary of State's office seems like it would be more on point than census populations. Traffic accident data, some studies have looked at not-at-fault driver crash data. If there's two vehicles involved in a crash, and one is clearly at fault, you make note of the race of the driver who is not at fault, and over the course of a year, you may have a thousand accidents and have a decent database. Moving violations data, Charlie noted that racial disparities tend to be lower with moving violations. And subset of that is the step stops, I'll be getting into that a little bit later. Speed activated cameras, this is something we could do, excuse me, it would cost money, but you could set it at 15 miles per hour above the speed limit and see, it'll take a picture, and you know, there'd be some hard data. There's some other things, post-stop outcomes, the Illinois Traffic Stop Studies do make notice on the duration of the stops, use of force would be interesting. Officer-to-officer comparison via internal benchmarks, this is a way of looking at your police force, and sometimes it's only one or two officers that might, you know, throw you off, might, if you can get those corrected, your racial disparity might go down. These other items are, I'll skip those in the interest of brevity. So why are population estimates used so widely as the benchmark? A RAND Corporation study in 2010 said it's because it's inexpensive, quick, and readily available. And realistically, IDOT can individually examine each police agency, you're gonna need some kinda mass tool. Drawbacks, the RAND study noted that census estimates don't take into account commuting patterns, or regional attractions like shopping centers, or in Urbana's case, hospitals and universities. Here's the quotes, that it's quite conceivable that the residential population in many neighborhoods has little resemblance to the patterns of people on the street during the day or night, the study noted. National Institute of Justice report in 2013 says, "Social scientists now disregard comparisons to the census for assessing racial bias." You know, the mayor may notice some of these factors about Urbana, 48% of the drivers stopped in Urbana between 2004 and 13 were not residents of Urbana. It's interesting looking through the 2005 IDOT reports, the town of Normal attached note to the report, they express some of the same concerns that the mayor has, because there, only 27% of Normal's residents are getting, the Normal residents comprise only, excuse me, 27% of the traffic stops. So this is another sister city with concerns. So hopefully our new statistician can help us sort through some of these issues with benchmarks, and I honestly think we'd be well off if we had two or three or four benchmarks to just compare data, see if there's a range. There's one potentially useful benchmark, step patrol data. You know, the STEP program, STEP stands for Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, where patrol officers focus on high-traffic-volume locations, where they're getting complaints, there's a lot of speeding or accidents. Here's some details, they do about 10 a month, three or four officers, excuse me, at a time. So, here's the step traffic stop percentages by race, so Caucasian, 65, African-American, 21, Asian, 9. So these actually hew pretty closely to the census data. So that's, I find that interesting, maybe the census, maybe it does have some validity, I don't know, there'd be something to look at. One thing I do, if you look at the census data, the populations, the African-American population in both cities are similar, 16%, 15%, so that may make, you know, might give it more validity than if Champaign had 40% African-American. So disparity ratios are sensitive to the benchmark utilized, so if you looked at overall African-American stops in 2013, the percentage, and divided that by the benchmark percentage, you'd get a disparity of 1.71. If you used the STEP benchmark, which was 21.6, you'd get a lower disparity, still a disparity, but it just goes to show you that benchmarks can, you know, can differ a little bit. So, that's about all I got, just some thoughts ahead.
Aaron?
Turn my mic on. Look, I know that this issue is a very sensitive issue for everyone involved, and my pain and passion that I have around this is going to come out. But I do think it makes it a lot easier, when the context is created by everyone, to actually say, look, you know, this issue is real. It has an adverse effect economically. We talk a lot about community development, we talk a lot about what that looks like in our community. And to have an issue like this that is having such a financial impact on the poor, and in particularly, African-American community, I think it creates the context that we should take this extremely seriously, and to look at this issue for what it is. And so, that passion and pain that I was speaking of, it certainly goes to another level when I feel, and I believe when I feel it, many in my community feel, as though what we have been experiencing for real is just trying to be explained away, right? And I'm not saying that that's what you're doing, because I really think that you were just sharing some numbers. But one of the things that I did make note of, as a comment that you made, was these are some of the things that we can make the racial disparities go down, right? And I'm not looking for the racial disparities to go down, I'm looking for the racial disparity to disappear, right? And to not be there. So, even the language that we use around this is extremely important for us to be very mindful of that, right? So, the other thing that I had as a question, I see that the data shows that 48% of the drivers who came through did not live here, right? But we should be clear that that 48% that we're discussing is not just African-American, right? That's 48% of the tickets were all across the spectrum, right? So, with the Caucasian population being, what, 65%? If you go back to slide 10 for me, can you do that? Is that possible?
I know, looking at the census data from 2010, I just was, I think it says Caucasian population is actually about 60%.
Okay, so what, slide 10, can you pull that back up for me?
I can.
So I know the mayor had read something about census data being not the most accurate piece. I thought that was it, what you just had there?
It's coming.
Yeah. So 2013 census data?
This is from the study, those are Paul Testa's figures.
Okay. I thought we agreed that Paul did a pretty good job.
I think he did.
Okay. So just going with these numbers, the census data connected to the STEP stops, is pretty much saying that here's your population, and this is the rate that they're being stopped, right?
I found that really interesting.
Okay. So, and this is when you're just dealing with straight-up moving violations, not investigatory stops, which where the disparity really starts to go off the chart? This is just straight-up moving violations, you're driving too fast, you blew a stop sign, you ran a red light, something like that, right?
The chief could answer in detail, but yeah, my understanding is hardcore traffic enforcement.
Okay. And so, even then, we have a slight disparity, but the census data is like right on point. So it says that we should stop the Caucasian drivers at about 65%, right?
That was what the STEP stop percentage was, yeah.
Right, which has been our most accurate analysis, basically based upon moving violations. We thought that's where the racial disparities were the least.
Right.
Right?
Paul, I talked to Paul on the phone Friday, and he was, he thought this is a good measuring tool.
Okay. So then, the question what one could ask is, okay, so what is the number for Caucasian drivers collectively? The IDOT traffic stop says that, what percentage of the population, of the Caucasian population is stopped? Do we have that number in front of us? The IDOT traffic stop, the latest one to come out, what percentage of the Caucasian drivers were stopped?
I don't, you know, I was mentioning Missouri, that Illinois doesn't go into enough detail on the percentages as part of the problem, and it's something we really need to work on at the state level.
At the state level?
Yeah.
You should call Carol and Scott and talk to them about that.
That thought occurred to me.
Would you like to hear from Alex?
Yeah, yeah, I would. I just wanted, and I don't want to hold this up, I was just trying to see that, according to this 48%, that's coming through the city of Urbana, that it's still a mixture of all ethnicities, right? When it's all said and done, when we use investigatory stops, and we put all those pieces in there, the numbers still come out at this 1.7, almost twice the driving population that's being stopped. But if we go with the most accurate data, which has been the STEP and the moving violations, then we should see numbers that look more like 65% of the Caucasian population being stopped, 21 or 17% of the African-American population, and so on. I just wanna try to get an understanding for myself and the public as to what these numbers should look like.
On page 45 of the traffic stop report, this is not 15 data, but 13 data showed that 55% of the stops were Caucasian. That's on page 45 of the statistical part at the back of it.
So in 2013?
Right.
It's some 10 points off what we would say would be the normal, based upon this benchmark piece that you use for STEP, right?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Alex.
Do we wanna hear from Alex, or is this?
Alex, I'm gonna present.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, Alex?
My presentation is very brief. First of all, I have said this before, and I'll say it again, I'm very proud of the city of Urbana for engaging in a very transparent look at itself, for the police department cooperating in that, for the citizens that were recruited to be part of the task force, and for the serious listening that the council has given to the final report. The first order of business that I wanted to share with you is that I would love to have champagne today, because one of the most important recommendations has been realized. We have hired a statistician. She is, as Mike mentioned, is starting on the 25th of August. The police department included many people in the search committee, I was a member of that search committee, I had a lot of tough questions for the candidates, and the candidate that was selected unanimously is outstanding. We are lucky to have her, we probably can't afford her, her life circumstances are such that she was ready to leave the consulting circuit and settle down, and so we get her. And among the many, her name is Melissa Hendrian Haynes, has been previously mentioned. The resume is being circulated to you, so that you can look at her credentials. She is highly educated, and one thing that I wanted to point out to the council is, the woman has integrity, incredible integrity. I feel extremely comfortable that I will be able to work with her, to be in part a counterweight and a critical reviewer of the data that's put together. The community will also be able to, the statisticians at the university, but we have a lot of smart people in this community. I'm very pleased with the kind of reporting that's going to come out. I also believe that she has a passion for intelligence in policing, and becoming a 21st century police department. So, the music now starts, and now we really go into the next level, which is implementing all of the recommendations listed in Section 2.3. We cannot, it would be difficult to implement some of them without her, now that she's on board, we're gonna be really in a position to be able to implement all of those. So I wanted to say that that is a great piece of news. The other thing I wanted to mention is, there was some questions about whether we have been collecting the data that was listed in Section 1.1, motivation for stops, traffic patrol. Yes, we have been collecting it, we have, I think, about 15 months worth of data. One of the things that the statistician will be doing when she, after she gets through her orientation and onboarding and selective training, is going to be able to start working with that data, so that we can produce a report for the council and for the public to look at, to put into a open data portal. We're very excited. There may be limitations in the data, as she starts analyzing it, we'll know what those are, and if there are any data collection improvements that need to occur, we will immediately work, the police department will know about it, and the HRO will also work to figure out the best way to improve the data collection process. So that is very exciting news. The third item that I wanted to mention is, Mike engaged in a conversation about benchmark and looking for the ideal benchmark. There is, the inaugural report that the State of Illinois produced, looks like this, it says 2004, and if you have some time to read through it, they walk through all of the arguments, all of the problems that they weighed when they determined the way to analyze the entire state of Illinois, and the judgments they made, and why they made those judgments. And so, in fact, to really digest the task force report, really, you need to digest that report as well, because the task force report relies on that report. And I believe it's on our website, and I will ensure that it is, and I will also circulate it to you, so that you can look at it. And one of the big items that was discussed in that report is this concept of push and pull, that populations are pushed and pulled to Urbana, away from Urbana, and how do you assess a proper benchmark? Today, Mike has talked to you about using an alternative benchmark, the STEP data, and I think that Mr. Hammonds quite correctly says, regardless of which benchmark you use, we have a disparity, whether it's 1.4 or 3 on the light end, or 1.8 on the heavy end, it's still a significant disparity. And so, I'm really excited with the onboarding of the statistician, she will be, as Mr. Cruz mentioned a little while ago, she will be able to help us standardize and prepare all of our reporting tools, so that we can report them out efficiently and consistently. But beyond that, she's also gonna be able to help the police chief and the city begin to assess efficacy of some of the tactics that are used to provide safety for the community, and assessing what that looks like in terms of fair, equitable, and justice. And so, we need that, we need that reflective piece, and her coming on board is that missing piece of the puzzle, and I'm glad that the city authorized it, that we found her, and that she is starting, I think, what, next week? The other item I wanted to mention is... The other item I wanted to mention is, which I've mentioned to before, is we are having a national problem, and here a problem with police-community relations. It just is. We can discuss the magnitude, but we have room for improvement. And when I say problem, I don't mean that anybody is awful. We have a problem with homelessness. We have a problem with poverty. And these are issues that government has to respond to and find creative ways to respond to. And of course, we need to know where we are. And so in front of you, since Madam Clerk stepped away, I'm going to grab something for you. What I'm going to distribute to you is the president's results, the result of the President Obama's Task Force on Twenty-First Century Policing. It's a pretty thick report. I have extracted out of that report the salient appendixy, which contains all the recommendations that that presidential task force came up with. And some of those are actually, were arrived at by our task force. Some of these are things that individually each of you council members has thought up on your own. And so you have an opportunity to look at that. And these are many, many things that this police department can do with the support of this council and this community. So I would like to, as the mayor mentioned, give you things to encourage reflection. Also, going around is a companion report was prepared after the president's final task force report, which was smaller in scope, which attempted to give the nation some insight, what are some things that we can do to implement the results of this task force? And so you'll see a handout, one page, that says, "Five Ways Stakeholder Groups Can Implement the Task Force's Recommendations." Some of these track very well with our own task force report. So I give you this to encourage your thinking. A final comment that I'd like to make, I will take your statistician questions. Mike was very generous. I do understand stats at a very high level, but I do not understand them like Melissa does. And that's why I'm looking forward to her coming on board. I know when they're off, I know when there's something wrong, and I know how to question them and participate. But, you know, that will be her role to guide us and assist us through that process. But what I do want to mention is, at the very last page of this report, around page ninety-eight, I'd like to read two quick paragraphs to you. And to preface it, the nation has issues in collecting data, whether it's officer-involved shootings or how to assess climate. And so the recommendations of the task force said, for the final recommendation, which was seven point three on page ninety-eight, the COPS office should consider taking actions, including but not limited to the following, creating a national policing practices and accountability division within COPS, which is a federal office. Two, establish national benchmarks and best practices for federal, state, local, and tribal police departments. Three, provide technical assistance and funding to national, state, local, and tribal accreditation bodies that evaluate policing practices. Recommend additional benchmarks, as the mayor has suggested, and best practices for state training and standards boards. Provide technical assistance and funding to state training boards to help them meet national benchmarks and best practices. So and at the very bottom of that second column, "In collaboration with the BJS Bureau of Justice Statistics, to provide local agencies with technical assistance in a template to conduct local citizen satisfaction surveys." So what the mayor has said today, in which Councilman Ammons has echoed also previously, there's data, and there's feeling, and there is experience. And so the mayor's listening tour, of which I will be a member participating in, will be an important component of understanding what is this particular community's lack of faith, concerns. And this last prong of this report says that even beyond the actual two-way listening, there is an opportunity for surveying. And so whether your Carle Hospital or Provena Hospital or any, you have your infection rates, but you also have your patient satisfaction rates. And you want to know, how do, do you feel safe here? Do you feel you're being treated well? And so engaging in some of this surveying of the community will be an important component because even if the data bears out that some of our tactics are effective in reducing crime, we have to weigh that, of course, against what the affected population's feelings are and perceptions. So I am very optimistic and excited by where we're moving with her onboarding. I think that perhaps as early as sixty days out, which would be end of October, we'll perhaps have some preliminary strong reports and have benchmarks that reassure the mayor that we are, have proper blood pressure readings, and even Councilman Ammons, that nothing is being missed in terms of the impact on the community. The final question before, the final point before I take questions is that I wanted to make is I've lost it, so I'll just take questions.
Charlie? I'm going to remind you what I think you wanted to say is, from our discussions in your office, how can we be more strategic? You know, in how we go forward? That was something you were thinking about before.
In answering that, I also want to say, we have an open data portal. You can go to the city of Urbana's website, and you can see arrest data. You can see it since I believe it's nineteen eighty-nine. One of the things we hope to be able to do moving forward is there are some ways to create reports in that open data portal where you can run your own reports. Of course, we have to make sure that all of the data links appropriately, and our IT department will be working with the statistician and the police department to make sure that those linkages are made, especially as Mr. Cruz mentioned a little while ago, the ability to track how many people are being arrested, rearrested, or recharged, what that looks like. We, I'm comforted that we'll be able to do that. If not with the current data, that we'll be able to make a system improvement and be able to track it moving forward. I remembered what I wanted to say. One of the things that the council asked a while ago, with reference to one of the recommendations, was one of the recommendations spoke to insurance, and that it's not affordable and a lot of individuals get. And then, you know, I took that seriously, and I reflected on it, and I had, somebody approached me shortly after that council meeting, I forget when it was, and said, "Wow, you're going to listen to your council, and you're going to go figure out how to subsidize insurance," and kind of chuckled. And I thought, wow. Was that a ridiculous recommendation the council made to me, you know? And, you know, I reflected about it. And of course, I took it seriously, and so I followed through. And I contact, I did a search of jurisdictions that are offering affordable insurance. And I found that the leading jurisdiction is the state of California. I called the commissioner, the insurance commissioner's office, and this was several months ago. And after speaking with the colleague, I somehow locked out, and the person that answered the phone was a high-ranking official that had worked with the insurance commissioner, the incoming insurance commissioner. And when that commissioner came on board, he felt that somehow insurance should be affordable. And so they conducted a study, and they actually pushed the insurance carriers to come up with a system that would work for, you know, the risk assessment and everything involved. And they did, and they decided to pilot it in two counties, San Francisco County and Los Angeles County, which of course has a huge minority populations and economic challenges. The program was successful. And slowly, they allowed, by invitation, other counties within the state of California to join. And now all counties within the state of California are participating. And I don't have the sheet, I can email it to you. I believe that one of the rates, and their criteria for you to be able to participate, I believe one of the rates was a hundred and fifty dollars, was the premium for the entire year for insurance. And it has had a significant impact. Now, they're figuring out how to improve the system and tracking, do people graduate out of it into regular insurance and all of those things? But I didn't want to tax the man's patience, that we were already at fifteen minutes in the conversation, and he was already being extremely generous, and I asked, "Would you be willing to talk to us or our council or our state?" And he said, "Of course." And I asked him, "How did you get this ball rolling? You know, did it take like an act of God?" And he said, "No, there was a series of simple conversations, and it snowballed into this insurance program." So I mentioned this to you because one of the recommendations that perhaps some people made fun of actually is a reality. Of course, it exceeds the authority of this council, but this council has the ability to influence and to recommend to our insurance commissioner in Illinois, or others, or legislators, how to begin the feasibility of this kind of program. And Champaign could perhaps be the first county, or some other county, that it would be an appropriate pilot for it. So moving forward, we did have this conversation, and some ideas were proposed, and they made some sense to me. And so I, I'll let you present those ideas, if that's okay. Did I answer your question? I went all the way around the world.
Diane?
Thank you. Thanks, Alex and Mike, for all the information you've provided. I went back and reread part of the task force report again, and I believed, I believed for some time, and I still believe it, that the most important recommendation is recommendation two point four, which is on page thirty-four of the report. And that's the one which gets at, the basic question is, which is, how effective are these traffic stops in promoting public safety? And the recommendation basically said we should be looking at how often the stops lead to arrests for things like traffic violations, for drug and property crimes, for warrant arrests, or for crimes related, violent crimes, or weapons-related violations. And when you combine that type of information with the category data that we are already collecting, that was one of my two questions I had for you both tonight, whether or not the traffics, it was a traffic stop, or whether it was, the stop was for community caregiving, like telling somebody that their taillight is out, or whether it was the targeted patrol or the investigatory stop. When you combine, looking at the effectiveness of the stops in terms of actually promoting public safety or solving a crime, combined with the category data, I think that really gets to the heart of how effective, or if these traffic stops are an effective tool for us to be using. And that answers, that answers a lot of questions. So my second question, since we're already collecting the category of, we're already categorizing stops using the new form that was put into place about fifteen months ago, the second question is, what's next? What steps do we need to take in order to look at the relationship between traffic stops and arrests for crimes? And I think it's probably the most important category to look at is are these targeted patrols and investigatory stops? So what, do we need to add more, you know, blanks on the forms? Or what is the next step for how to get at that information?
The answer to question one is yes. The data has been collected since the change was made, we have it all. The, the second question is, what needs to happen is that our statistician needs to arrive, and she'll arrive next week. And when she arrives, then she's going to work on, at some point, the police chief will be working with her to begin to compile that data and to report it out.
So it's just, we have the information, it's a matter of compiling the data.
Doing quality analysis.
Okay.
Figuring out whether other databases need to be linked up to it, figuring out if we have to have crosswalks. So the entire piece of ensuring that the data has integrity, and if there are gaps in the data, bringing in other databases to supplement the data, and that is actually very difficult, it's doable. And we will be able, if the data's there, we'll be able to do it. So at this point, that analysis needs to be conducted, and it will be her job to conduct that. We will participate, but, you know, she has to do that. And once it's all done, you know, if anybody wants to help, we'll release it to you, and you can have a stab at it. But, you know, she has to do that, that analysis.
So back, okay, that, thank you. So back when, back in the spring, you surveyed the council and the mayor to find out what, what we agreed were essential versus, well, what we thought were the most essential, or the, well, you surveyed the council, and eight out of eight, one hundred percent of us, all seven council members and the mayor, agreed that item two point four was an essential piece of information for us to have and to get. So I think it still should be a top priority for when the statistician comes on board. If we are already collecting the data, it's just a matter of putting the two types of information together to see whether these stops lead to arrests and how effective these stops actually are. It can allow us to answer a whole lot of questions. And it's got implications for policy as well as, as practice. Is that correct?
Yes, and I have heard you, and I think the police chief heard you as well, although I don't like speaking for him, that let's make sure that the statistician knows that two point four is hot, top priority. It is, in some regards, it's simple, and in some regards, it is not. She is going to have to figure out the causal relationships, the correlations, whether we need to rapidly amend some of these forms and start collecting additional data. This is not something that you will have to wait a year for. You know, if, I would imagine, and she'll correct me, because I'm sure we're going to bring her before the council within two to three weeks of her arrival to introduce you. My hope is that within two months, we'll have a preliminary presentation of the data and an analysis of the data with, that answers two point four. And if she finds gaps or errors in how we collected the data, or that it's not, it does not provide meaningful information, we'll still release the data, but then we'll have to make quick system improvements. And so that we can get back to you within three months. Even with three months of data, that would be helpful. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Aaron?
Diane, I actually would like for you, I didn't, I wanted to put it in to make sure I can see it in my mind and have it on my notes. The points that we looked at at two point four, when we collect the data, you said on page thirty-eight, was it, that you said?
No, we look on page thirty-four of the task force report.
The thing, what were they again, if you would read them for me just one more time, please? The stops, the efficacy of the stops, we were trying to look at, what were we looking at that was going to show whether or not the stops were effective?
As the task force recommended, we look at arrests and classify those arrests according to whether they were traffic crimes, so like speeding or blowing the stop sign or something like that. Warrant arrests, drug crimes, property crimes, or violent or weapons crimes. That was the suggestion of the task force. There may be other ways to look at it, but that's what the task force recommended. And then she, the task force, further recommended that you compare those, the arrest data with the type or classification of the stop. So whether that arrest was made during the course of a traffic stop, a community caregiving stop, or investigatory patrol stop. So, so we're looking at two different chunks of data, but, but seeing the relationship between the two. Not causal, but looking at the relationship between the two.
Right, I just wanted to try to get the, to make sure that I was clear on that, because I didn't have the page in front of me.
Page thirty-four.
The
I can read it to you.
No, I think I understand at this point, what I wanted to get at was that when we list those particular things, whether it's traffic stops, warrants, drug crimes, property crimes, violent crimes, I want us to make sure that what we see there, that we don't miss, and this was a point that was raised by Eric, and I think Duro may have raised it before as well, if we look at the stops If we look at the stops and the disparities for African-Americans shows that of these African-American drivers, we found this, 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 and this, and we found property crimes, we found a gun, we found some drugs, right? We would also need to know, and this is one of the concerns I have, is that if the Caucasian population is not being stopped at the rate that it should be stopped at, based upon fairness and equity of traffic stops, then what are they getting away with that other folks are not? So I just want to make sure that we're very clear, that even though we are collecting a particular set of data, if it's skewed more heavily towards the population that's being disparately treated, then it's going to look as though that it is a great tool. Look at all this stuff that we found, right? You see what I'm saying? So I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't know how the statistician teases that out, to make sure that we're clear about when we're looking at violent crimes, I think I've said this when the chief was sitting in that seat, that if you have hard evidence, good solid evidence to say that individual X is driving a particular vehicle and we have this solid evidence that that person is involved with a violent crime, a murder, they shot a witness at a, of an upcoming trial, then a license plate light being out or something dangling from your rearview mirror, if that's the only thing that you have to get to that particular person because there is that type of evidence to, to support that stop, then I think the public understands that. But fishing expeditions, that I just, you know, I can stop them because they didn't exactly stop, you know, signal a hundred feet away from the stoplight, right? But there was no real reason other than to stop them, or I just thought that this person might have been somebody I knew and I think they might have had something to do with something, so I want to use this. Oh, and lo and behold, I found ten grams of weed. Now, you know, that's a whole different scenario. And so one of the things that, I love learning, I love the expertise of a statistician or whoever it is, right? But my experience in life has also taught me that there's a whole lot of really smart people who don't understand my life, right, and what I experience on a regular basis. So the people are still speaking about a, a set of experiences, right? I'm representing that to the council. And the data that we have shows, there's more of a disparity when we use investigatory stops and all those types of things, right? So there is nothing stopping this council from mandating now that the department, that the police department, no longer at this point, just stop. We do not want you stopping people just on these types of expeditions or, or investigatory stops. If you do not have hard evidence to show that this person I want to stop here and I have to use a traffic stop to get them, then don't stop them for that. There's nothing, we are, we are the local legislators, we can mandate that and ask that the police chief follow that. I don't understand, maybe you can explain to me, Alex, why that wouldn't be a good idea now, or somebody could explain to me why that wouldn't be a good idea now?
I, I would have to reflect on, that's a powerful question. I get dramatic and emotional about a couple of things. One of them is the Constitution. I am very proud of our system of government and the home rule power that you hold. And we can solve all kinds of problems by eliminating rights, you know, constitutional rights, but we choose not to as Americans. And so regardless of the efficacy of some tools, that does not make them right. And so you all will engage in the, as the data is presented, if something deters crime, but you find it to be offensive to your consciences and to this community's values, then you will motion and you will direct as, as you will. And so one of the things though is to understand, what is the effect? And for that, we need the data. I, I'm not, I'm the choir, you know, there is systemic flaws that harm minority individuals here and throughout the country. But we need to understand what is the extent and where, where, where are those pieces? And so as I mentioned to you, this, this is a good department and this is a woman of integrity that is joining us. And you have my office that is not going to, you know, play along. You, I don't believe the chief's going to hide anything. He can't? The council asks questions all the time. You're going to continue what you're doing. And so I, I think in the next four months, we've had this problem, this report came out in two thousand and five, and I don't know what the state's doing, I'm not disparaging the state, but this council is doing something significant, historic here. And so you've been dealing with this problem since two thousand and five, you've had data, you now, you've impaneled a commission, you've hired a statistician, we're right there. And so some amount of patience is necessary so that we can figure out where we, where we are. And, and I think that within this year, before you're all reelected or you're, you're going to have some opportunity to make some significant difference, I think.
So maybe it was unfair for me to put that in your lap, but, and I appreciate your patience and your optimism, it really does help me, right? As you have said, and my experience has shown me, we've been doing and collecting this data for over a decade. So we have enough data as it relates to investigatory stops. I'm asking for, for fifteen months of not doing investigatory stops. And what does that look like, right? You know what I mean? So, I mean, we have all this other data, why not add this piece to it to see what that impact has, right?
Can I respond just in one minute? Not quite to that, but the last thing I wanted to make, I've read the file of your experience and what occurred with the complaint that you filed with the civilian police review board. And what, what I want to share is, actually, I reread it last month. I, our civilian police review board is an achievement on your parts. It is maturing. It, it has, it is maturing. I, I just worked two days at the Taste of Champagne, I'm going to be at the Sweet Corn Festival, I went to the CU days at Douglas Park in a massive campaign to make sure people understand the person that they will be interacting with. I think I have a warm bedside manner, to testify with my person, the integrity of the process, that we will listen why the mayor and the council put it together. And it's going to be relentless throughout the year to begin to help people restore some level of faith in the process of review. The civilian police review board has reviewed TASER usages. You entrusted tasers to the police department and you provided for oversight. We have conducted a rigorous analysis of those nine utilizations and we have found no deviation from the, the protocol and policy. The police department have used them as promised. We finally, it was inevitable that we would have a discharge or activation of the device where someone was electrified, electrified or whatever the term is. And so we are in the process of preparing to review that in the very near future. And so what I would like to say is that some of the decisions you've made are reaping, our benefit, our fruit is, is being yielded. And the civilian police review board is a much richer, more competent board today. And it will be even richer and more competent next year and the year after, because we intend to stay the course. We're working on continuing to develop our partnership with the police department. One of the things that, when I was out at some of these events, is trying to help people understand, we are not antagonistic to the police department. We are part of the continuum of delivering a respectful, effective law enforcement service, as is the council, it plays a role, as it is. And in closing, the presidential task force report I gave you, one of the things it said would be the greatest result of their work, and even our final task force, is what you're doing, discussing. I don't know how long we've been here, this is, this is what needs to happen, to a community discussion. And so I know you want to act, but part of the action is the discussion. So I just wanted to leave you that, that we are making progress and, and I believe we'll continue to do so. Am I excused?
Sure, thank you. Dennis?
We've had a really good discussion here, I think, about this topic, which has been of urgency for a lot of the people in the community and I appreciate it and I really appreciate Aaron's proactive advocacy for bringing this back to us again. It sounds to me that I, well, I really agree with a lot of the points that Alex has brought up and I appreciate the fact that we have a, a human relations advocate here that's, has a lot of high integrity. We have already set now in place the appropriate vehicles for not only defining the assessment of the material that we have, also the collection of the data is in, in place and ongoing. And I think that it's very important that the mayor is outreach into the community and establishing further opportunities for the community to testify, to, to share experiences and to communicate to the, to us and the community itself, the concerns that they feel. And it's not so much important where the traffic stop took place or, you know, what the ratio was exactly between, you know, Caucasian, an Asian, an African-American or Hispanic. But the important data is satisfaction of the experience. When you came through the experience of your traffic stop, were you treated fairly? Did you feel that the, that your concerns were listened to? If you were belligerent, do you, did you ultimately get the, get the reward of those belligerent actions by learning a lesson of maybe spending some time under arrest, if that was the result? What is it that we, how is it that we are learning to be the citizens that we wish to be and also to be treated with respect that we wish to be treated? There will be instances where altercations can't be resolved, you know, at the street curb and will continue in other venues, which might be the court or other places. But nonetheless, whenever the police stop, we want to know that the policies that are in place are fair and equitable, that there is due concern for human rights and human dignity, that people are not being accosted or pushed around without, you know, without threat of harm to the officer. We want to know that, that their rights are being honored and that ultimately justice is being served in this community. So this is partly a, a public assessment of how people feel about their experience in Urbana the city. And while it's not a popularity contest, because it's also going to be based on hard facts, what are you doing when you're being asked to identify yourself? But also, we want to know that, that people are not being stopped unduly for frivolous reasons. So yes, I do have some concern about what the scope of investigatory stops contains. And we know that sometimes these can be important tools in crime solving, but also they can be just harassment to an innocent individual. Now, the police are not supposed to really have an idea of who is innocent and who is guilty unless there's already a rap sheet on, you know, associated with the vehicle in question. Those people who are stopped are somehow triggering the experience by some action that they've done. Or it might be about the condition of their vehicle. Those things can be, can be corrected by thoughtful individuals who no longer want to have harassment experiences. I mean, there's certain things you can do to protect yourself that, you know, are your, your right and your responsibility and your prerogative. But no matter what, what the results are of your individual experience, that we hope that, that the results from this study will not only make the laws in Urbana more fair for all, but that, that the quality of life in Urbana will be such that people will not pick out our community as being deviant, unfair, or in some, some, in some way disappointing to their purpose of life. So I don't know how that's ultimately going to be achieved. I think a review of police policy will obviously come after we've collected the right kind of data for this report. But I have really high hopes and I think that, like Alex has said, we're already doing so many things that other communities have not done. We've achieved more in a lot of respect to police interaction with the population than many communities have yet to figure out. Where I think we're on the cutting edge, I think we are trend-setting here. And I think we're going to continue to be really, have a lot of high integra, integrity as we approach our solutions. So I don't know, that's my opinion and I just kind of congratulate this body for doing, I think, the good work that has to be done.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks, Alex and Mike and everyone for putting together some of this discussion material. Just a few comments on the benchmarks. I did, I did read the two thousand and four report originally and, and familiar with the methods they use, various methods they discussed in, in benchmarking. And their challenge, of course, is to try to get a benchmark that could be applied across the state. So they had a much bigger challenge to try to, that's why they were doing a lot of push-pull and explaining, you know, what kind of methods they were using to try to get a reasonable estimate that would work reasonable for everyone, but not perfect for anyone. But we have more control because we're just looking for a benchmark for ourselves. So what they recommend, the kind of gold standard was the not-at-fault accident. And that's a little bit harder to collect and there's not as many, there's not all that many accidents, so it takes a while to get good statistics on that. But I do think the step data is probably a pretty close approximation of that. And I was comfortable looking at those numbers just in terms of reasonableness, you know, as far as, you know, the Asian population was lower, but we all know that, you know, most of our Asian population doesn't, don't have cars on campus and so it just makes sense. And that would be a good benchmark if, if we feel we need a benchmark. But we're also looking at year-to-year changes, so I don't even know how much we really need a benchmark if we're just focusing on Urbana. We can just compare this year to next year to the year after that. Although our population does change slightly year-to-year, maybe that would come out in that step data, but I, I think there's a little bit too much emphasis placed on a benchmark. I don't think we really need one, we just need something to, to track our year-to-year difference. I do think that the recommendation two point four is what we're trying to focus on and Dural's brought up, are we collecting the right kind of data to evaluate that? And it seems like maybe we are, maybe with the data connections, it's really going to be hard to tell, I think, until we do start putting it all together. And once the statistician starts putting it together and, and trying to analyze it, then you usually come up with more questions and find gaps where you might be missing a piece of data. And the other thing that we could look at with regard to that is that there are a lot of new requirements now, just starting in twenty sixteen, for Terry stops, stopping pedestrians that try to get at the same sort of efficacy of investigatory, of stops sort of situation. So maybe we should look at what kind of data we're collecting for Terry stops and if some of that would be also appropriate to include in traffic stops and, and maybe analyze the Terry stops as well as the traffic stops as, as the statistician gets on board. I also appreciate Alex's mention of the surveys. I think we have a lot of good, we have a couple of good examples. I know Bloomington and Peoria has worked with, I don't remember, a, a college or university that, well, I may get that wrong, but there, there is a survey out there that basically when people get, have a police interaction, they get a, a number, they can go online and, and use that number to fill out a survey on that police interaction and how they felt about it. And I think that would be something to look into, to see if we could tap into what's, what's out there for that. For, and I appreciate Aaron's comments about fishing expedition. I know that that can be really annoying if you feel like you're, you know, if you're, feel like you're a subject of, in the fishing expedition. I was stopped once for a license plate layout. I can understand, you know, a turn signal where it's a safety issue or, or something, but, you know, a license plate, is that really that dangerous? But I guess they're there for a reason, so maybe they felt like they had to stop me to let me know. But if I was African-American, I could definitely feel like... But if I was African American, I could definitely feel like, well, they're, you know, that's the difference. I didn't feel like it was a fishing expedition, but I think maybe if I was black, I probably would. And that's, you know, that's something we need to work on. The other thing, I think the last thing, was I know that there's been some back-and-forth at Secretary of State's office about notification of people for expired license, and I don't remember what the latest on that is, if they're actually sending out notices or not. But they, they started, okay, maybe that's not going to be a big of an issue, but I think the, I did look at statistics on our open web portal, and for, over the past year, there have been a higher percentage of our stops have been for license registration tickets, so that's, can be a steep fine, depending how it's, how it's handled in court, I guess. But if they're sending out notifications again, maybe that won't be an issue. I was thinking maybe we should do some kind of education on how to sign up for the online notification, and maybe that'd be a good idea, anyway. I think that's, I think, I think we've made some progress. I appreciate the material, it'd be nice to have it beforehand instead of having it passed out the day of, but, you know, it's, it's something that we have now that we can look at for next, next time, too, I guess.
Charlie?
Yeah, well, I'm more concerned with actually making some achievements and not talking about what we're going to do in the future. We've set a lot of high expectations for the statistician. And so I passed around something that a couple of us put together, based on earlier conversations about this. Some of it's based on previous conversations we've had around this table. Number three is the, the report that we're looking for related to 2.4, so I won't belabor that. That's part of what I think we all expect from staff. And so that, that's coming, so I don't think any, any motion is really needed about that. But I think we've also talked about reviewing our fines and looking for appropriate payment levels. And so what I propose is that we, that, that our finance department and, and related folks, city attorney, review those fines and look for payment appropriate to Urbana median income levels. You know, we have a fairly high level of poverty in this community. In spite of the university, it's, the, the numbers are not, you know, even if you discount the fact that we have a lot of students that have no income, we still have a lot of poverty in this community. So, so our fine level should be appropriate to Urbana median incomes, I think, and, and the idea of offering community service as an alternative for payment, I think, is really important. That would be a key step. And of course, the, the corollary to that is that, you know, we can, can community service apply to some of the state fines over which we have no control? So that's a, a piece I'd like to see investigated. Regardless, I think we need to craft a resolution to work with, to, resolution two, and work with our state legislators, seeking a change in the state fines that are based on median income or some other income test, because clearly some of those are extremely painful for those who do not have income or on low, on low income. And, and, you know, frankly, we want people to have driver's licenses, we want people to have insurance, but we need to make those things, you know, we need to be affordable, we need to make sure that people can get driver's licenses in a convenient way. So again, you know, we need a state-level program that allows for community service payment alternatives, I think. So those are two additional things that I'll throw out there. I, I am intrigued by the addition, the idea of, of making insurance affordable. That was a much earlier request, and I don't know how we actually go about putting some flesh onto that, onto those bones, but, but I, I really think that that's an important component, long-term. Again, that may be a, a request of, of this legislature, but it'd be good to get some more feedback on how we might get a program like that off the ground. And I'm still waiting to hear, we mentioned driver's licenses before, you know, how do we get, how do we make sure that people who are driving to work, which we want them to be doing, can do so legally? You know, and so, so those are, those are the things that I'd like to, to propose and see done, but I'm, I really want to see concrete action moving forward. I want to see some real proposals next month. It'll be, you know, our, our meeting is five weeks away, that'll be the next time, this will be on discussion. I'll be the chair of that meeting, and I'll make sure it's on there. So, anyway, that's where I want to go.
Erin?
All right, so I appreciate those pieces. I would love to lobby the state representative to work on some of those things. I'll be doing that. I did speak to her and, and Scott. So I do think those are concrete pieces that we can do moving forward, but I'm going to say, I'm going to motion that based upon the data, based upon the qualitative and the quantitative data that we already have, as it relates to investigatory stops, which take our numbers way off the charts, I think a concrete step forward for this council is to instruct the UPD to not engage in pretextual stops without the concrete information and data that they need to know that a serious crime is being committed or about to be committed, or they are finding someone who has just committed such a crime. And so pretextual, from my perspective, just to give it some sort of framework, license plates lights being out, something dangling from my rearview mirror, my music is too loud, I didn't signal 100 feet from the stop sign or the stoplight, or as I was turning left or turning right from the stoplight, I turned into the wrong lane, right? We're looking for things that are serious violations that might cause a real safety hazard or cause harm to, to some other citizen. And when we look at the serious moving violations, like the STEP program, I don't know how much of those things I just listed were a part of the STEP program. I don't know if the STEP program was just more speeding, that type of stuff. So I'd like, I'd be somewhat interested in seeing how much of those types of things were a part of that. But those are the things that I experienced and the community experiences as, as the pretext for these sort of investigatory or pretext or fishing expeditions, right? And I think that we would, it would be a concrete step forward. It would allow the police department to focus more on the more serious types of, of crimes and stuff that are being committed, and it would be benefit to all of us. So I am going to try to craft a motion for us to take to, to the full council, to instruct the UPD to, to cease stopping citizens for pretextual reasons. I give, I listed some of those reasons. So I'll ask my more experienced council members to help me formulate a motion, unless you're just opposed to it hap, well, I won't ask you since you don't want a motion, Charlie.
Dennis?
Dennis?
Yeah, I would like to, I would appreciate your doing that. I don't think we need a motion today, this is just a discussion item, but I would like to see you bring that to the, the committee of the whole at some time, so we can actually have a real discussion about the elements. I'd like to be able to see what elements you'd like to include in it. Right now, you say that you're not quite sure what all the things are, and so I'd like to, I'd like you to bring back an idea of exactly what you want to say, and at that time, I'd like to then make motions about how to proceed.
Well, if I can respond quickly. It is an agenda item, it's not a discussion item, it is an agenda item. And what I'm trying to do is to move it forward to the council, and we can further tweak it and to make sure that we have it the way we want it, but I think that the, the context is there, the data shows this, the experiences show it, it's something that we can do concretely to move this, to move forward in a progressive way on this particular issue. So the motion that I'm making is that the, that we send to council the instruction to the UPD to no longer stop people for pretextual reasons. And the framework that I will offer just for it to go forward, again, is license plates lights out, something dangling from my rearview mirror, music too loud, not signaling 100 feet from the stop sign or stoplight, or turning into the wrong lane. That is my motion.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. Is there any further discussion on this issue, Charlie?
Yeah, I'd like to know, you know, I've passed around some materials. Erin has another idea here. I'm not sure what you meant, Erin, by that I wasn't interested in a motion. I am interested in moving stuff forward, so I, I still don't understand what you were saying.
Well, you said you weren't interested, you didn't think we need to do any motions tonight, is what you said.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, okay, yeah, I, I, but, but that's if staff accepts, you know, the, the points that we've already listed here on, on the piece of paper I passed around. I would like to have feedback on what you've proposed from the mayor, the police chief, and our city attorney. Without having something written in front of me, without having some additional data, without going back and looking at the task force study and the data there, I'm not prepared to say whether I can support it or not. So, you know, I think it, it is worth looking at, and so it needs to be fleshed out. And, and so it, you know, if that is a motion, a serious motion that you want to make, then it belongs on the next council agenda, our committee agenda, in two weeks, or three weeks, which would be tonight, with, with the, the background information that we need to, to, to talk about it in an educated way. And so, so, so my request would be to, to do that and get that feedback from the mayor, the police chief, and our city attorney on how that would work. I don't know that we even have the power, as a council, to direct the mayor to do that.
Mayor?
Well, if you want some feedback from the mayor, we have just hired someone to look at the data, and you, and Erin is proposing that we take some action, which we don't really know what the results would be until we understand the data. What we're dealing with is public safety. The police department is supposed to enforce laws, they're trying to prevent crime, they're trying to solve crime. And, you know, you can reduce the number of stops, but right now, we don't know what the effect would be. We have to look at the efficacy of the stops before we make any motion to change what we're doing. Let's understand what we're doing first and what the results are before we start saying we have to act right now. Our whole process is to thoroughly look at things and ask questions rather than just jumping forward with the solution when we really haven't defined what the issues are. We have a problem that African Americans are more likely to be a victim of crime than other parts of the population, and that should be kept in everyone's mind, that we're not trying to repress people, and if we are doing things that, you know, hurt people's feelings, we have to address that. But the underlying responsibility that we have is for public safety, and we, we can't treat one community differently than another, one neighborhood differently from another, so we can say everybody's going to get exactly the same number of traffic stops until the crime is the same in every neighborhood.
So just going to Charlie's point first, as we talk about having information, making an educated decision about this. We have decades of data. We have been collecting the IDOT traffic stop report for a decade or more. We have state studies or, and national studies that show the impact of investigatory stops. We have books that have been written on it. It doesn't need to be studied anymore. Investigatory stops, which by and large are drug fishing expeditions because of the so-called war on drugs, and it has had a disparate and devastating impact on poor communities and communities of color, clearly identified through all of the data that you look at. No matter how skewed you may think it is, it shows that this particular practice that gives police departments the autonomy or the discretion to say, hey, I'm going to stop person X for one of these particular pretextual reasons, is one of the leading causes for the disparity. There's no question in that. All of us have read it, all of us are smart enough, at least in a statistician perspective, not to be even at a high level, it's clear that this is having an adverse impact on, on our community, on certain members in our community. So we have, as local legislators, the right, the authority, to tell the UPD what to enforce, along with the state. But they don't just go out and haphazardly enforce laws. We, with Home Rule, get to also enforce other things, or to, excuse me, put into law and to ordinance certain things that we want them to enforce. We have, right now, the authority to do that, if one of you would second a motion to do just that, or spend the time necessary to craft a motion in a more appropriate manner, if that's what we have a problem with. But all it's doing is just going to council for further discussion. But there's no second to a motion on something that is as clear as that? Now, I know what the reason is behind that, I know it's very difficult for us to look at the police department in a particular way, or to stop doing things that we think is being successful, to keep people safe. These stops, no matter how, what the efficacy is of these stops, the poor community, African American community, and as the data shows, even Latino community as well, is being stopped at a higher rate, and it's resulting in poor, really poor, community relations, a lack of faith in the police department, and thus a lack of faith in this council, to do the right thing to address that particular concern economically, emotionally, and I can't even get a second to a motion to address it, even with the data, qualitative and quantitative data. So y'all wrestle with that, I'm done with it.
Well, I think it's fair to say that the motion failed, because it's a very serious issue, and the motion is not very clear to, I think, anyone up here, maybe other than you, in your mind, and it's my opinion that it failed, because I think council members, rightly, want to see it reduced to writing, to understand what they're voting on, and I think that's an entirely reasonable request.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would humbly submit that I believe that there have been things that have come before this council in committee of the whole, they were just agenda items that were discussed, we crafted a motion on the fly and sent it, sent it to council, and even if it got sent back here, it did go forward to council to get discussed. I'm just asking that it go forward to council to get discussed, and it can be further clarified or put into a written form. That's what the committee of hold is for.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, then, moving on. Agenda item number nine, a resolution approving an inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing with the Houston-Galveston area council. Chief?
Okay, the fire department will be engaging in the process of purchasing, purchasing a fire apparatus this year for our campus fire station, and we're recommending that you pass this resolution. It improves this interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing, which, with the Houston-Galveston area council, it's called the HGAC, and we're recommending that because in our research and talking to the vendors, a lot of the vendors we use, this is the best pricing that we can get for the products we purchase specifically, a fire apparatus. So the memo kind of explained the process, and so I'll, I'll take any questions on this process.
Charlie? When you say fire apparatus, you're talking about another engine?
Yeah, a fire engine for the campus station.
Oh, okay, I didn't know we had another one do up.
Yeah.
Aren't you just going to clone the one we just got?
It'll be similar, it'll be a little different based on the area it responds to. It has a little different task than the one that we bought this last year.
Okay, and so, you know, when I think Houston-Galveston, I think, you know, way down there at the edge of Texas, I, I still don't understand this cooperative as well as maybe you do here.
Yeah, the vendors that we worked with, they, they've all recommended this cooperative. This cooperative is a purchasing cooperative nationwide. I think most states engage into it, a lot, and it, a lot of municipalities do. I know that in chatting with the other fire chiefs across the state, Bloomington's last purchase was through this cooperative of a fire apparatus, as was Mattoons', and our vendors are telling us that they can't, if we go through the bidding process and get our prices, that they can't bid a price cheaper than what they offer through this Houston-Galveston because of the, the volume of purchases that are made through this cooperative.
So, you're saying that, okay, but we orders a specific engine with certain things on it and put that out for bid?
Yes.
And so, you're going to basically do the same thing, but put that to this cooperative and get a better bid, is what you're saying?
Yeah, they've, they've, they've pre-bid the prices, so they have a base price on a fire apparatus, and then we add options to the apparatus, add a pre-bid discount on the options, and so, it's how the process works.
Now, I understand.
Mayor?
So, would you say how much, what percentage Bloomington saved, for example? What their, what their estimate is?
I, I don't have that, those numbers on what they save.
What does the co-op, what does the cooperative purchasing say they, they think they can save us, what percent?
Yeah, they haven't given us any percentages. Basically, the product, we, we join, we enter into a contract with them, and we become a member, and then we look at their pricing, and we can compare it to our experiences in the past, and, you know, with the vendors that we've purchased off of, and the vendors we may purchase, you know, that can provide the product that we want, and we will, we'll make sure that it's the best price.
What would the difference have been if we had used the co-op for the most recent purchase?
We, we haven't looked into that yet.
Okay, because that would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, and we, we can't really get that information until we join. We can go onto their website as a guest and look at some general numbers, but to really dig down and put the options on and compare to what we just purchased, we have to, we have to be a member of the co-op.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
Yeah, when I read this, I thought you were talking about, you know, respirators and other gear, and now you're talking about, you know, a major expenditure, a fire truck.
Yes.
And, so you're saying that, that, that this dealership, I guess that you might as well call it a dealership, would give us a better price than the manufacturer? Don't you bid out to manufacturers to get the best price for an engine?
We, we do, we're actually going to be working with the same people that we normally buy through, but the companies that they work with, you know, the, say, our dealer that we work with, the, the people that build that fire apparatus for that dealer, they've made these arrangements with the HGAC through their bidding process, you know, actually to, to sell the fire truck at a lesser price than what we can actually bid out for directly with our dealers that we use now. It's, uh, and I think it's the volume that they do, and they've, they've completed the process. We've, we sat down and went through it with Elizabeth, and it, it looks like they meet all the criteria that legal were, legally will respond to meet when we bid out a piece of apparatus.
Well, I guess that, you know, if the ultimate result is that it's cheaper for the city, I guess it's not a bad thing.
Yeah, and in the end, we're not required to buy through these folks, it just gives us another option as we research our prices to be able to get this pricing.
So, you just?
Right now, if we're not a member, we can't get the pricing.
So, you just want to have a membership?
Yeah, we're just going for a membership.
And what's the membership fee? Oh, you said it was free?
There is no fee, yeah.
All right, I guess nothing's lost here, then.
Right.
Bill?
Did you give us a copy of the contract?
No, but I've got a copy of the contract.
Okay, just in the, in the resolution, it says, "Copy of said contract attached here too and incorporated," so I think we need to see it before we can review the resolution next week.
Okay.
Anyone else? Oh, sorry, Diane.
I would move that we send resolution number 2016-08-053R to council with a recommendation for approval, assuming that we get the copy of the contract before next week.
Moved by, by Diane, and seconded by Aaron, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it. Agenda item number 10 is ordinance number 2016-08-066, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 20, Articles 3, 4, and 5, propose revisions to the city's right-of-way ordinance. Public Works with the Cliff's Notes version.
Do you want to start out? Well, we're, we're back at this committee of the whole meeting, at the last one we had presented this, and I know the, the council wanted to look at some potential modifications. I think one in particular was for Section 3, which had to do with the one-dig policy. So, I guess we're, we're following up to find out what modifications or revisions are desired to be made to that.
Was a copy of that provided in the packet this week?
It would have been from the previous one. I know one of the concerns that, that Mr. Fulk had from when he was here previously was he was concerned that it placed a burden on the utility companies for notification, but in some discussions with Kurt Borman over in legal, it, it actually places more of the burden on the city. You know, we have to collect those plans, we have to hold an annual meeting, we have to review the plans, we have to provide all the utilities with a copy of our capital improvement plan, so they're aware of what projects we have going. So, really kind of, the city ends up being the, you know, the organization that has to collect all the plans and coordinate all the construction, and there are a number of exemptions, or exceptions for the utility, you know, if it's an emergency, if it has a, you know, a financial impact on them, there's ways that they can be exempted from, you know, having two locations, you know, overlap within the same year. So, I mean, I think it, the attempt was made to make it, you know, reasonable for the utilities, but also tried to prevent, you know, the situation we had on Florida Avenue, where we had multiple utilities coming through in a short period of time through people's both front yards and backyards.
Diane?
I appreciate any efforts that you're making to reduce the possibility of that happening again. The one thing I remember, the other thing I remember about this ordinance was, it seems to me that, and this is a very picky thing, but the requirements for, you were requiring the utility to put up a sign, and it seemed like a pretty, pretty big structure, or a pretty, it seemed like it would be an expensive thing to do, whereas just like a yard sign type of thing seems like it would do the trick in terms of notifying the neighbors.
Yeah, and that's a good point, and I think we have some flexibility to, to work with that.
And then they could use that over and over again, too.
Correct, yeah.
So, I would reduce the specs for those notification signs that you had in there.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, our intent with that was just to have people be notified, one of the issues we've run into is a lot of times people have no idea what agency is working in their yard, and have to call the city to find out.
And you could put up multiple signs with the name of the company and a contact number, and it, for the same cost of doing one more expensive sign.
Any further discussion? Bill?
One part of the discussion last time was the notion of one utility fiber company adding more conduits in addition to the conduit they need, and we've talked about that at some length, and I think the, that's really not a direction I think we should go with that, to force multiple conduits, or the city would pay for that extra two or three or four conduits while they're boring in an area, largely because we're finding that a couple of things are going on. Number one is, these fiber companies really have unique kind of origin and destinations that they're going to, they're not mimicking, I mean, if you think about it, they're going all after different customers, whether it's large apartments, or residential business, or what have you. The routes aren't always the same. True, Florida Avenue was a circumstance where there was multiple conduits being used, but even to coordinate all that into one, you know, directional bore would be difficult. It was one of the premises of UC2B to begin with, is putting in conduit with lots of fibers and selling higher use, you know, to other entities, and that hasn't really borne out real well. So, I don't know that we want to necessarily get into business and invest in extra conduits when we really don't know the business models, or where folks are going to and from, when we have four or five fiber companies working in town. So, at this juncture, anyway, I'm not recommending that that's something that we grab onto and make sure there's extra conduits. There may be exceptions to that, but right now, as a rule, I don't see where at least the city should invest in that extra money. Where two companies, two fiber companies or more agree that, hey, let's, let's pull its directionally bore two or more conduits, that's great, and we're certainly going to be cooperating in that, but I don't think we should try and enforce that.
Any further discussion, is there a motion?
I think one of the items, too, that you directed us from last time was to reach out to the utility companies, and we can go ahead and do that. Obviously, that'll take a couple of weeks to...
That's our next step.
Yeah.
Okay, actually, I do have a card from Peter, I thought that was from when you spoke earlier. If you want to come on up, Peter?
I, first of all, want to apologize to the Public Works people for not doing this in email, it's just been incredibly busy the last few months, and just not a single moment, it just happened that this came up when I was here, so I kept to do it verbally. These, this is basically feedback on the, on the proposed resolutions and the specific issues that were a problem for me in reading through it. So, the first is, the prohibition from putting spoils on the right-of-way is unclear. I, I understand, I think, the intent, which is to not leave piles of junk in the public right-of-way, but it's unclear, like, if you've ever tried to dig a hole, you put the shovel in, then you have to do something with that dirt. So, the question is, could you clarify it so that you know, so that my teams know what they have to do with that dirt? Do they have to walk 20 feet away and dump it onto a trailer? Can they dump it onto a tarp and then, within 48 hours, move that to a trailer? You know, that, that, clarifying that so that we know what we're supposed to do. The signage was also one specifically, it talks about putting it on existing posts, and if you could simply reduce it to being the, you know, the standard things that I, that I buy for advertisements anyway, that would, that would greatly ease the ability to put that notice out, and you're absolutely right, we would, we would do it more than every 200 feet, just because it's better for us to, to keep people informed in that way. With regard to the utility coordination, I mean, as far as I can tell, there's going to be this new set of rules that little people like Volo and people who are getting new license agreements will be subject to, that the big players really won't. And I don't know that there's any way to avoid that, we're going to have to share our plans. We don't actually make that many plans that far in advance, this license agreement was a, kind of a major step forward for us in terms of planning ahead. But I think bigger companies probably do, and they're going to really dislike having to share that to somebody, and I don't know how you're going to work around that. With regard to the exception for a financial problem, or I don't remember the exact details on that, but the, I, I had asked that it just be clarified that basically, if we didn't have a customer by December, if a customer hasn't approached us by December 1, or by November 1, or something like that, if they, if they approach us on, let's say, November 2, then we need to be confident that we're going to be covered by that exemption, that we can then build out to that customer, do whatever we need to do to, to build out to that customer as quickly as possible. I believe that those were the only, the, the main concerns, and of course, I also wanted other utilities to be notified, but that's, it sounds like that's, that's happening. I'll also just push back a little bit on what Bill said about the multiple ducts. So, it was, it happened on Florida, it's happening again on Lincoln. We shared resources with another utility company on Vine Street. Another, that other utility company shared resources with a third fiber provider on Lincoln, but because there was no kind of city plan that, oh, we, you know, probably other, this is an artery, probably other people are going to want to put resources there, there's no duct there, and we're going to have to build out a, a parallel line. Again, it's not your job to plan ahead for us.
You have one minute left, Mr. Fulk.
Thank you. It's not your job to plan ahead for us, but if your goal is to limit the number of times we end up digging somewhere to serve customers in your city, then it's, it's a good thing if you end up with extra duct. It doesn't deteriorate over time, it doesn't take up space, it's not ugly, it doesn't matter whether the endpoints are exactly right for a given provider, if I, if I know that I can get to a given location, and then I have very easy transport to another location, well, that will reduce the amount that I dig. I will, I will dig in different areas, and it'll reduce it. So, again, just my feedback to the, mostly Public Works, but also the council. Thank you.
Dennis?
Well, it sounds like there's a few items that are still not, that need refinement, and I guess probably, rather than forwarding this without quite getting those details figured out, would probably not be a good idea, so I guess I would make a motion, we just hold this in committee, have, have some revisions created to address some of the questions. I hear three or four questions raised before we actually take this up again, and that's my motion.
It's been moved, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, I guess, we should, aye? Show hands. Aye? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, it will be held in committee. Agenda item number 11, ordinance number 2016-08-073, an ordinance approving a right-of-way license agreement with Windstream KDL LLC.
Yeah, what you've got before you is a, another license agreement, this one is for Windstream Kentucky Data Link, it's a telecommunications company that has fiber optic facilities once again in Urbana right-of-way. They had an agreement that was executed back in 2011, that one only had a five-year duration, so it actually expired on June 30th of this year. So, with this agreement, this new agreement would have the duration of 20 years, which is similar to the other agreement, what's in the right-of-way ordinance. I'll point out for this one, this is just existing facilities, they're not proposing to add any facilities, so these are just existing facilities that they have as part of the 2011 agreement, along with amendments that were made to that agreement. So, no new facilities are proposed as part of that agreement, this would just cover their existing facilities for a term of 20 years. And just my thanks to the legal division, and Kurt Borman in particular, for working very hard on, on both this Windstream and the Volo agreement. There's a lot of work in drafting these up, as you can tell.
All right, any discussion? Is there a motion?
Yeah. I'd make a motion that ordinance number 2016-08-073, approving a right-of-way license agreement with Windstream KDL LLC be forwarded to the city council with approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Aaron, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 12, ordinance number 2016-08-074, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for FY 2016. budget ordinance for FY 2016, 2017, rebudgets and technical corrections.
So this ordinance would amend the budget. There are a couple of corrections to the FY 2017 budget in the general fund and in the recycling fund. All of the other items listed here in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, the CD special fund, the ED fund, the TIF 1 and 2 funds and the TIF 4 fund are all basically timing issues. It's taking items that had been budgeted in the prior fiscal year but not spent, that were already committed and budgeting those in this year, just fixing the timing problem. The one, one thing to note here is I did make a note in the fiscal impact section specifically about the recycling fund. With these adjustments, that fund is showing a deficit at the end of FY 2017. We're going to need to take a much closer look at that before we move into the next budget process. And it's possible that we may need to look at a rate increase in order to maintain the current service levels.
Yeah, okay, that, I got that. Thank you. And my other question was something else, really. The first bullet point on the second page of your memo, you're talking about marketing fund, a small amount of remaining historic preservation grant funds for an intern and services to be rebudgeted. What was the intern going to do for the HPC? And it didn't happen so that that money is now what freed up and is going to be what, returned back to the general fund? Or is that wrong?
No, it's, it's grant money. So it has to be spent on the project that the grant was awarded for. And perhaps Libby can help to clarify that.
Yeah.
But there was just a small amount remaining that we still need to, actually, we probably already have spent in this fiscal year.
Okay. And maybe just, because I can't remember what the intern was going to do, I imagine it's historical research of some type. But can you clarify?
There was the interactive map that I think was demoed at the last historic preservation commission meeting that, I think you were there to see that. And some of that was carried over into this fiscal year, but we're complete with it.
And so an intern assisted with that and that's what we're in. All right, well, that's good work. Thank you.
Diane?
I move that we send ordinance number 2016-08-074 to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Diane, seconded by Aaron. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the ayes have it. Agenda items number 13 and 14, which would conclude the agenda for this evening, both relate to liquor license issues. And as a state liquor license holder, I am required by state law to recuse myself. So I would ask Diane to take the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 13 is ordinance number 2016-08-076, which is an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class BB liquor licenses for Pizza M 208 West Main Street.
Mayor? A lot of people think that pizza goes with beer. So they want a beer license, so I would recommend it.
Question?
Dennis?
Mayor, is that at the, at Pizza M's current location?
208 West Main.
Okay, that's, okay, that's, we're flying M as...
Right on there.
Okay, right, okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we send ordinance 2016-08-076 concerning the increase of the number of Class BB liquor licenses for Pizza M at 208 West Main Street to the city council with approval.
Second.
It's moved by Dennis, seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Next up is ordinance number 2016-08-077, which is an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R1 liquor licenses for A+ Restaurant and Entertainment LLC, doing business as A+ VIP Lounge at 214 West Main Street. Mayor?
This is actually somebody going from a bar to a restaurant. So this is their request. They seem to be a decent business, so I would recommend approval.
Dennis?
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to move ordinance 2016-08-077, amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R1 liquor licenses for A+ Restaurant and Entertainment LLC, doing business as A+ VIP Lounge at 214 West Main Street in Urbana, to the city council with approval.
Second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Aaron. Further discussion? Charlie?
Yeah, just a small technical note. Given what we just did, we need to change the number of R2 licenses in the final version of this when it comes to council next week. From, from, R2 currently has nine. It should be eight.
Yeah, there's a reduction, yeah.
I don't think that requires us, things are automatically reduced when somebody gives up a license. All you vote on is to add.
Yeah, I just, I just know that the table is, needs to be corrected.
Oh, I'll talk to Jo-Linda about that. Okay.
Okay, so when we say it next week, the table will reflect.
Right.
Well, it'll be correct. I'll see which way it's supposed to go. I'll ask her tomorrow.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. There are no further business before this council. This meeting is adjourned.